Good morning, Dr. Rich. Good to see you. How you doing?
Good day.
The man is more than avatar, right?
Well, we signed that name for the company.
Thanks, I'm proud of him.
Pretty good, pretty good.
Yes, I'm sure he's here. You know, every time they ask that question.
Check on everything.
You remember Chuck?
Yeah.
Swear, I swear.
Somebody kind of.
That's the member of the company, but he had it written on.
So, he sat at the table with me the night that was like our first dinner, you know?
Oh.
And he was just home and on and on, and everybody at the table. He would talk all the time.
Yeah, you probably got him. He was entertaining around the house.
No, that's okay. I've got a friend, Boz, for me.
Oh, so he takes care of a little bit? I had a time when he was in.
That's it.
And the chairman would make the call.
That's it.
Brother, I can do that.
Yeah.
They keep turning us back over.
I said, but you know, I agreed with something, but I'm hanging for last night.
That long one, yeah. There's a lot of hurdles.
Yes.
Good morning. Let everybody get seated. Well, we appreciate the interest and enthusiasm to come spend your glorious Wednesday morning with us here. Thank you very much. And with that, I'd like to call the order, the meeting of the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees. We appreciate your continued interest by coming month after month for many of you to support and learn about the great and wonderful things that are happening throughout our system. A great deal of work and preparation has gone into the development of the documentation for this meeting, and I want to thank the chancellor, the staff, and all of the presidents and their staffs for their diligent work in making sure that we have all of the preparation in hand and what is needed. As always, we remain laser focused on student success and remain true to our core mission of education, workforce development, and academic transfer. We are pleased to have joining us this morning for the invocation, Dr. Timon Knight. Dr. Knight is the pastor of Heritage Baptist Church on Perry Hill Road in Montgomery. He's just celebrated forty years in ministry and has served as the pastor of Heritage for the last fourteen years. Dr. Knight has a PhD in Old Testament and Hebrew and has served as an adjunct professor for New Orleans Baptist Theological Seminary Extension Center in Birmingham for over thirty years. Timon and his wife Darlena live in Montgomery. They have a son and a daughter and four extraordinary grandchildren. Dr. Knight, thank you.
Thank you. As we pray together, I just want to thank you again for investing in the lives of men and women to equip them to be more effective members of our community. Let's pray together. Father, we do come to you for wisdom. You said to ask for wisdom and you would give it. Father, in this day and time and the challenges that this board faces and the challenges of educating men and women to be more effective members of our society, Lord, that there is a need for wisdom. So, we ask you to give this board wisdom and direction to help them do things that will be not just good, but great, be the most effective things that they can do. And Father, we just ask you to help them, to help them lead as they serve and to remind them of that real leadership comes through serving others. And Father, we just ask you just to direct them as they model, as they not only mentor and teach, but as they model the effective way of to living. And Lord, we know that the ultimate model was our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And Father, we just ask you just to bless them, to give them strength, to give them courage, to give them direction. And Father, just pour your Holy Spirit out upon them. And Father, we just pray this now in the name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Knight. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag? Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Mr. Jim Schell.
Present.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Present.
Ms. Valerie Gray.
Present.
Mr. Goodrich Rogers.
Present.
Mr. Ron Houston.
Present.
Mr. Levellin Rome.
Present.
Mr. John McCartney.
Here.
Mr. Britton Lightsey.
Here.
Dr. Yvette Richardson.
Present.
Governor Kay Ivey. You have a call.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Our agenda was distributed in advance of our board members for their review. I will now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So, my second.
We have a motion by Mr. Goodrich Rogers, seconded by Mr. Jeb. Ready to vote? Excuse me, got tongue tied this morning. All by show of hands or voice vote. Thank you. The motion passes. So, with that, we will actually move through our agenda, starting with public comment. Do we have someone signed up for a public comment, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Chairman, we need to vote on the minutes left on the floor.
Thank you. My mistake on that. The minutes were approved, were actually distributed as well, and we need to vote on those. Do I have a motion to approve?
So, my.
Motion by Jeb.
Second.
I meant by Mr. Rogers. Seconded by Valerie. Ready for the vote? Raise your hand. The motion passes, the minutes are approved. Thank you, David. Now, we will move to public comment.
Yes, sir, we have just completed tunnel for AEA.
Signed up, public comment.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Tunnel, how are you?
Chairman Rome, Chancellor Baker, members of the board, it's a good opportunity to be here. My name is William Tenell. I have gone by Tunnel my whole life, so no worries there. If you see my name printed, you'll know why. I just wanted to briefly introduce myself. I've worked with the Alabama Education Association. I've been an employee advocate lobbyist for over twenty-two years in public education. I served most of my career in Tuscaloosa while working with the school systems there and for a healthy number of years, Shelton State Community College as well. Quite frankly, until my district got so large, they had to sadly remove Shelton from me and place it, you know, in another region. Currently, for the last five years, I've worked as manager for all of our field staff in the northern half of the state, and I have the privilege of being the liaison to the community college system. And it has been indeed a pleasure, attending these meetings and working with Mr. Baker, the staff, and particularly with Mr. Conard. My comments this morning, I'll be very brief. First of all, just wanted to congratulate the ACCS and all of the staff and all of their employees on a successful legislative session. I believe the session was very healthy for all of us in public education, and it was, I heard one legislator say, it's easier when we don't have so much money, but it's good for us when we do. So, you all had a successful session. We felt like we certainly did as well in some of our efforts that we made in K-12 and other parts of the education family. I do want to say a special appreciation to Mr. Boone Conard for the good relationship that we've had working with him. I hope he's in here to hear this, but there he is. But with our government relations staff working at the House, it's always a pleasure to be able to work together on things, and we hope that you'll see the Alabama Education Association as a resource. We certainly believe that there's more progress to be made. K-12 has had very healthy sessions the last couple of years in particular, and so they are becoming very competitive in the workforce for educators. And so, my goal personally is I'd love to see the ACCS stay at the top as the premier of our higher education places of employment where people want to come to work. And I know you feel the same way, so I want you to know that we're committed to assist in that regard. I know my comments are before the rest of the action items, so I went, rather than saying thank you, I'll say, I also urge your support for the salary schedules, which was the item that I signed up to speak to. I do want to say thank you to the staff and Mr. Baker and our HR folks that worked and the folks that served to pay extra attention to the support staff scale as well as the adult education scale. Those were two areas where we really hoped to see some improvement that will help you in recruitment of employees and retention as well. You never have to recruit an employee that you can retain, so we appreciate what you've done there. I know that's your decision solely to do that, and I thank you that that's presented in the salary schedule, and I hope that you'll support that. But I appreciate the opportunity to address you, to all of our distinguished guests and presidents in the room. If you ever need anything from AEA, please don't hesitate to call. We are here to serve and be a resource to help you be successful, and of course, we'll do that through the representation of our members and help to promote them to be better employees as well. So, thank you for your time.
We thank you for your comments and support, and we also appreciate the yeoman's job that teachers everywhere and staff do to help keep our K-12 system running as fine as it does, so thank you for that. We will move on with the rest of our agenda, starting with item seven, executive legal and public information. 7A1, Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees Self-Evaluation Resolution. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees adopt the attached resolution evidencing its undertaking to define and self-evaluate the board's responsibilities and expectations in compliance with SACS SCOC, Principal 4.2G. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
I'll second. I have a motion by Mr. Lightsey, seconded by Mr. McCartney. The, ready for any discussion? Hearing none, ready to vote? All those in favor, show by the voting sign or raising your hand. The motion passes. Next on our list is an item from Bishop State Community College, Approval of Resolution to Revert Property to the Board of School Commissioners for Mobile County, Alabama. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize the Alabama Community College System to transfer via quitclaim the central high school property to the Board of School Commissioners for Mobile County. Is there any discussion for this matter? Do I have a motion to approve? A motion for Mr. Jeb Schell, second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Houston, any discussion on this matter? Hearing none, ready to vote? All those in favor? The motion passes. Next, we go to section eight, Instruction, Research, and Development, Adult Education, Facilities, Fiscal Information Technology, and Workforce Development. First up, we actually have an item from the Alabama Community College System, the 2023-2024 ACCS Salary Schedules. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees adopt the attached 2023-2024 Salary Schedules for the community and technical colleges and the Alabama Technology Network. Do I have a motion to approve?
So, my.
I have a motion to approve for Mr. Jeb, um, not Jeb Schell, Mr. Dust Rogers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Valerie Gray. Any discussion on this matter? All those in favor, show by the voting sign or raising your hand. The motion passes. Next, we have an item from the Alabama Community College System, Allocation of the 2023-2024 Two-Year College System Imprisoned Education Operations and Maintenance Appropriation. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve the allocation of the 2023-2024 Education Trust Fund appropriation for operations and maintenance of the two-year colleges and prison education appropriation as recommended by the chancellor. Do I have a motion to approve?
So, my.
Motion by Mr. McCartney, seconded by Ms. Gray. Any discussion on this matter? If not, show by raising your hand. The motion passes. Next, we have item three in this section, Coastal Alabama Community College Approval of Increase in Board Rates on Baymanet Campus and Addition of Board Plan on Bruton's, on the Bruton Campus. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Coastal Alabama Community College to increase board meal plan rates for the Baymanet campus and to add a meal plan for the Bruton campus. The rate increase and addition of the new board plan will take effect fall semester 2023. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
A motion to approve for Mr. Lighten, seconded by Jeb Schell. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please show by the sign or raising your hand. The motion passes. Next, in this section, we have a motion, I mean, an item from Bishop State Community College, Approval of Special Building Fee Increase. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Bishop State Community College to increase the special building fee from ten, ten dollars to twenty dollars per credit hour. The fee will take effect fall semester 2023. Do I have a motion? Motion from Mr. Schell.
Second.
Second from Mr. Houston. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please show by a show of hands. The motion passes. Next, we have an item from Wallace State Community College, Arley Winston County Community Learning Center. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Wallace State Community College to accept the modular unit bid for the Arley Winston County Community Learning Center project. The building project will provide space for adult education, workforce development, training, and technology access solutions for the community of Arley and Winston County. Contracts for the modular building shall be executed no later than October 1st, 2023, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
I have a motion from Mr. Lightsey.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rogers. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please show by a show of hands. The motion passes. Next on our agenda, we have personnel. Are there any reports from the personnel?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Charlene Finkelstein with Human Resources, and I do have a few new additions to our staff that I'd like to briefly introduce to you. First of all, we have Kalina Daniels. Kalina, would you stand? Kalina is our new workforce grant support specialist. Kalina has served for the last several years in various positions, both in business and for the state. She's been a home tutor, a library assistant, a cashier, a secretary, but most recently served as an intern for the state of Alabama's Executive Budget Office. Kalina has a bachelor's degree in business administration from Huntington College here in Montgomery, and she is based here at the system office. Thank you, Kalina. April Kendrick. April is our new administrative assistant in our workforce development department. She has over twenty-one years of administrative experience with the city of Montgomery Municipal Courts, where she served as court operations clerk and accounting clerk. She has a bachelor's degree in sports management from Faulkner University and a master's in sports fitness management from Troy University. She is also based here at the system office. Thank you. Jada Harrison. Jada is our new regional director of accounting. She has over twenty-five years of experience in customer service, sales, and accounting, and has served the last seventeen years at Marion Military Institute as an accountant and most recently as the controller. She has a bachelor's degree in business administration from the University of West Alabama, and Jada will be based at Marion Military Institute. Thank you. Destiny Smith, are you in the room? All right, well, Destiny couldn't make it today, but we'll introduce her at the next meeting, so if you would, help me introduce or help me welcome these three new additions to our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlene. We appreciate that, and we give a hearty welcome to Kalina, April, and Jada. Thank you for joining us. We appreciate it. Next on the agenda, we have the chancellor's report.
Mr. Chairman, I've asked Boone Conard if he would kind of give you a review, and I think he's already given you a handout, but we've just been in attendance at president's meeting, and Boone made a presentation to them, and I just think it's something that this board needs to have available to them.
Yes, sir.
Well, good morning, Chairman Rome and trustees. As has been mentioned earlier, we did have a good legislative session. We've talked at length about the numbers and projects and some of the things included in that, so we're now kind of turning our focus forward and looking towards the future and preparing, getting things ready for next year. And as the chancellor mentioned, gave a recent presentation at the president's conference and just had some facts and figures that we thought the board should be aware of, some very positive things, and wanted to share those with you today. So, first, we did a comparison and analysis. Of course, 2015 was a big year for the community college system. We, this board was created and some other things occurred that were very positive for our system, and so we used 2015 a lot as a benchmark year to see how we've come along since that time. So, I went back and looked at 2015, looked at the budget, the education budget, and kind of a comparison of how ACCS fared compared to all the other educational entities at that time. So, in 2015, the overall, ACCS got about five and a half percent of the overall education appropriations. So, for all the money that was appropriated by the legislature, ACCS got somewhere in the neighborhood of about five and a half percent in 2015. So, since that time, this last budget that just passed the legislature, that percentage has now increased to about 6.25 percent of the overall education budget. Now, that may not sound like a large percentage, but when you're talking about a eight-plus billion-dollar budget, those are millions of extra dollars that the legislature has given to our system. And I think that goes to the work that this board has done and the presidents that we have at the colleges to really show the legislature and build up that trust and confidence that they have in us to get us from where we were, the percentage, where we were to where we stand today. We've talked a lot about the supplemental appropriation bill that passed this last session. If you look at the percentage of what ACCS received compared to the overall budget, that number's 17.4 percent. That was, that's a much higher percentage than we historically receive in the education budget. So, I just thought that was important for this board to hear those numbers, to show the support that the legislature has shown to us, and we're hoping to, of course, build upon that as we go forward. Also, wanted to share with you some information that the Executive Budget Office shared with us last week related to where we stand in the education budget for this fiscal year, as well as the economic outlook as we move forward. We've been talking a lot, as you know, there's been a lot of federal money that's been pumped into the state the last few years, which has resulted in a level of growth that we have known is unsustainable, and the question's always been, when do we hit that peak? Well, we have hit that peak, and we're now going down the other side. As of the end of June, education trust fund receipts were down 1.27 percent as compared to the same time period last year, and you all have this information in your packets. As you know, the education budget's made up really of sales tax and income tax. Sales tax is still up. Sales tax is still up. It was up, it's up 3.4 percent year over year. People are still buying things. The internet tax is especially up. It's significantly up. What's notable is income tax is down. It's down 3.72 percent. So we talk about, you know, we, we, and it's a good thing for it to have a low unemployment rate, but you've got that on one hand. On the other hand, you've got income tax down. So I think that points to the focus that this board has had and our presidents have had on the labor force participation rate and needing to really focus on getting that rate up to where we need to be, at least to the national average. As for expectations for the remainder of the fiscal year, the Executive Budget Office expects this trend to continue again. As has been said many times, we knew this large growth over the last few years was unsustainable and expected to start seeing a slowdown in FY '23, and they expect this to continue, and the growth will level out by the end of the year. So that's where we stand with the budget. Although I will say, even with this news, because of the Governor Ives and the legislature's conservative spending over the last few years, we are still in a very good position, very good place as a state when it comes to the budgets. There's expected to still be some, you know, budget growth as we go into the next fiscal year. There's about $750 million that's in the Advancement Technology Fund, which is, which is a funding source that we've certainly benefited from in the past. And it does appear, we won't know until the end of the fiscal year exactly how much, but it does appear there will be additional supplemental appropriations that could be possible as we go into next year for more one-time expenses. So, so even though we're seeing, you know, rates start to, to go down, we're still in a very good position as a state when it comes to our budgets and the economy. So that's my report. Happy to answer any questions you might have. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Boone. Appreciate it. But I think that the message is still very clear, as Boone indicated, that we are in the best place we've been ever. And in spite of being on the downward trending side of that hill that he talked about, I think it is clearly a continuing testament to the work that's being done and the results that are being delivered in houses, houses and homes throughout the coun, throughout our local communities every day. So thank you all for that.
Mr. Chairman, I would like also to talk a little bit about workforce training. Boone did mention participation rate in Alabama is just not what it needs to be or should be. Yeah, we have a low unemployment rate, but that doesn't represent the number of people that should be working by any means. And in this last session of the legislature, they passed a joint resolution, House and Senate, which reactivated the committee that had previously been created in the lieutenant governor's office with the express purpose of trying to analyze, look at all of the resources, all of the available activities, and the people who are involved in one way or the other in workforce training in the state. And through doing that, look how we might, could be more efficient as a state. Recruit and bring more people into the labor force. We desperately need to be able to do that and find a way to do that in a way that serves all the communities in the state of Alabama. We've been having continuous conversations with a variety of different people. The governor's office is helping us. We're fortunate as a board to have the chairman of the, of the Regional Workforce Board Committee.
Alabama Workforce.
I meant Alabama, okay. There's so many, I can't keep all the names straight. But that is going to be an issue that we're going to be asking all the presidents and everyone else that can to be involved in, because it is our responsibility to be the primary source for workforce training in the state, and we're going to live up to that demand. But it's going to take the efforts of everyone joining together and utilizing all the resources in a meaningful way. And I, I saw Nick Moore walk in earlier. Nick will be representing the governor's office and working through all of this, and we appreciate the help of the governor's office. So with that, I just kind of wanted the board and the presidents to be aware that there's a lot of work to be done, but that's not surprising to a board, to a president. You always find plenty of work to do, but this is a major, major initiative that we have to be responsive to. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chancellor. We will now move to committee reports. Item 11 on the agenda. Facilities, we'll start there. Ms. Mark.
I don't think Mark's in the work session.
I don't know.
There are none, any other committees that have no other reports. If there are no other reports in this section, we have exhausted our agenda items. We've come to the end. That was a pretty quick turn this morning. And we will have, following us, the work session. We will take five minutes, so please come back about 10:36 for that. So the next meeting of this board will actually be August 9th in this very place, in this very room at the same hour. So thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. Work session, we have a number of items, and we are going to start with the proposed action items executive sessions.
Good morning to you all. We'll start the work session agenda with Wallace State Hansville's request that the Board of Trustees authorize the president to name the welding classroom suite in the Technical Education Center for Welding and Entrepreneurship as the Donald R. Clay Welding Classrooms and to add appropriate signage. This naming opportunity is in exchange for a gift of $25,000, which will be used as an endowed scholarship for welding students at the college. Does anyone have any questions relating to this item? The next item is another request from Wallace State Hansville that the Board of Trustees authorize the president to name the conference room in the Technical Education Center for Welding and Entrepreneurship as the Sandra Phillips Self Conference Room and to add appropriate signage. This naming opportunity is in exchange for a gift of $25,000, and these funds will be used to establish an endowment to fund a perpetual scholarship at the college. Does anyone have any questions regarding this item? The next item is a request from Northwest Shoals that the Board of Trustees authorize the president to name the baseball field for Mark, to name the baseball field as Mark Lee Legacy Field and to add appropriate signage. This naming opportunity is in exchange for a gift of $100,000 to be paid over 10 years, and the funds are to be used in support of the college's athletic program. Does anyone have any questions relating to this item? I think the next several items are facilities. I'll turn to floor with the board.
Good morning, Chairman Rohn and board members and Chancellor Baker. We have seven items to go through with you quickly this morning. First one is to present to you at Jefferson State, a workforce education center located out the Jefferson campus northeast of Birmingham. In the slide here and in your packet, you see the placement and the location for where the workforce center will be built to the west of the existing campus. This is in your packet. We did include a floor plan that includes instructional classroom space and labs, and these will be flexible to serve the community and identified workforce programs that are in that area. We've also included an elevation that shows the profile of the building and how this construction will go forward. Board members, we have in here dates where we expect to have bids back at the beginning of August for this project, and then as the project is approved by the board in the August board meeting, we expect to be able to complete this meeting in the third quarter of next year. Any questions about the workforce center project? The next project that we have is at Shelton, and we have two that are for the Martin campus. First one in Martin at this location is the theater that is to the west and to the left of your slide and your board information packet. The renovation includes several scopes. One is dealing with some water damage that occurred earlier in the year that created some damage to the existing stage and theater area, and we included some snapshots for you to consider in your packet. As we get into the project, we also identified, as we were looking at concerns with the facility, that we also had some structural and mechanical opportunities to fix the orchestra pit. And also, as we were doing this work, the work expanded into some paint and also flooring, and then to replace the seating in that theater and to modernize the overall space. We expect that we will receive bids back at the end of this month and be able to bring those results back to you in the board meeting in August. Work as anticipated for this should be completed as we go into the end or the closeout of the calendar year 2023. Any questions about this project? The next one is also at Martin. This goes to the opposite end of the building, over to the east and into the southeast corner of the facility. We have a space here that has currently been used for ELT training that is going to be repurposed to serve the community as a flexible community education space. We included a demolition plan, and for your purposes, the space that we're looking at here is the area that is essentially up in the upper right-hand corner. This space will be repurposed to serve those community needs, repurposed for woodworking and other sort of skills and so forth that the community can come in and participate and work within this location. We expect bids coming back into us at the end of July, and then this work with the lead times and so forth that we're looking at, we expect to complete this work sometime towards the end of next year. Any questions about this work, board members? The next one goes to Trenum State, specifically to Executive Park, and we're looking at roofing projects that are out there. We have five buildings identified at this campus, and the square footage is close to about 137, 138,000 square feet. Buildings A, B, C, and E are a priority for us at this time to draw them in. Building D, because of the nature and the anticipated work that we expect in there to repurpose the space for health care, that roofing project will be delayed and looked at later on as we get to the construction and the renovation of the building. Specifically, this building D, the fourth floor, expects to be built out and become a science floor for biology, chemistry, so we'll have hoods, vents, and other mechanicals that'll be penetrating the roof. So we'll coordinate the roofing efforts with the contractor as we do that work to renovate that fourth floor. Board members, any questions about the roofing projects that we have at Executive Park? Again, we expect bids will come in July, August for what we do, and then the work that we do not do at that time will be folded in at a later date with the renovation of that site. The next project that we have is at Northwest Shoals. This is the Phil Campbell Campus renovation. This is a shot that tells us a little bit about the site that we have there, and it's to the west of Phil Campbell. We have a number of buildings on that campus. This other shot shows. and not only mechanical, but hopefully for some other things to consider, but mechanical is a long lead time item that we are expecting. We'll be able to have those numbers for the August board meeting. We do look to have the rest of the numbers for electrical and for demolition so that the board can act on those in the September board meeting. As we get into this September, will also be an opportunity for us to take a look at re-roofing. We're going into this project where we gut and demo the space and allow the architects and engineers time to finish up their designs before we release the other bid packages. This will be multi-prime and we anticipate that the early demo will allow us to see anything that's a hidden condition, factor that into the bids for the finished work and the build-out of the spaces that are going to be renovated. And those bids, we do expect that will come back to us in the October, November timeframe. Construction for this work, Board Members, we expect with demolition beginning in the third quarter and then the other packages as they come in in October, November will be organized and we expect to have contractors on work going to that, doing those particular projects starting in December, December, January of 2024. Work will be completed in the second quarter of 2025. Any questions about the work and so forth that we're putting forward here as a recommendation for renovating the Phil Campbell Campus? The next project that we have goes to the MacArthur Campus at LBW, particularly at OP. In this location here, what you see in this slide are highlighted in, in red, the roofs that will be reworked. We also have with some of that work because of the age, some of these roofs are going out as much as 30, 40 years. So we do have some structural damage to the fascia and to some of the roofing that we'll have to correct, but by and large when we're through with this restoration effort, our roofs will have another 20 to 30 years of life. We expect those bids will come back to us on the 18th of July and then work will commence going into the third quarter and we anticipate trying to get all this work completed before Christmas and the beginning of the rainy season. Any questions about the re-roofing efforts at MacArthur Campus? The next one is a return and report to you, Board Members, regarding our efforts over the last four to five weeks at the Enterprise Performing Arts Center. This project, we did something unique and a little bit different where we brought in a construction management as advisor to help us with this project and in doing so, we broke this project down into 11 different bid packages, 13 actually, because we did release the site package back in the summer. The results of those bid packages, we took 11 on bid day, we gave, and we discussed this previously in our facility committee, that we had two of the 11 packages where we had zero bids and we had five of those packages where we only received one bid. So we did a little bit of a dive into this and these are the results financially of the packages and the work that we've been doing over the last three to four weeks to negotiate, to exercise our right under Title 39 to solicit negotiated bids and to work with those that also submitted bids and give them consideration if they wanted to revise theirs or keep the existing proposal that they submitted. Our cost for the construction for these 11 bid packages puts us a little more than 30 million. As we take a look at the results, this is what becomes very interesting as we look at the economy. We take a look at that, when we are on the mechanical side, we engaged over 500 different mechanical contractors and invited them to the bid. We take a look at only 73 of those 70, of those 553 that responded and three took an interest on the mechanical side and yet we only received one HVAC contracted bid initially. So we went back, we tried to engage others. There was another one that did come back to us, but they were severely overpriced and so we were able to go and move forward and have some confidence in the HVAC bid that we received. Electrically, the same thing. We requested and engaged over 649 electricians. 68 expressed and responded to the solicitation and three of those, however, were serious enough to take a look at this and consider whether they wanted to submit bids. And we did have two electrical contractors that did respond on bid day. We come back to the plumbing and we had engaged again in this area, 335 invitations. Forty-two plumbers responded and we only got and expressed interest from four and on bid day, we had only one contractor that submitted a bid. The general package was the best of the participation, lower numbers. We invited 20, 50 responded, 12 took an interest, but when bid day came around, we only had four bids. Fire protection, 198 contractors invited, 23 contractors responded with only four that expressed an interest and yet on bid day, we had no responsive bids, so we had to go into negotiations. The theater rigging and curtain and theater lighting, this one we sent out and were able to invite 14 different vendors. Six of those vendors responded and expressed an interest and yet when bid day came around, we only got, we got no bids. We were able to go out and request and get a proposal to provide that theater rigging. We come down to the seating contract package, 12 were invited, three responded, three interested and we had one contractor that participated on bid day and then one seating contractor submitted an informal proposal after the bid date. Data communications, this one we had a little bit more to work with on this, 59 invitations. You take a look at the contractors, only five responded and took an interest and we were able to receive two bids on bid date. Then audiovisual was 14 invited, 10 responses, six that really expressed an interest and then we were able to receive via five bids to, to go towards this project. We dove into it and looked at the statistics and just the overwhelming outreach of nearly 600 contractors to, 6,000 contractors to, or six, nearly 2,000 contractors to participate. When we dive into the data, this is the feedback that we received in terms of the outreach and the reasons why there are no bids and lack of participation. We're overcommitted for the upcoming work that they've scheduled and many of these contractors are effectively scheduling and planning out. We come back and they say, if that's not the reason, they're telling us that they just have, they don't have enough manpower or size to take on any more work. They take a look at these projects as well and on something this size, they will spend tens of thousands of dollars in resources trying to put together bids. And so when they take a look at the next comment here, excessive estimating workload, they just do not have the capacity to look at this seriously. The fourth bullet in there is they, to take on new work, they did not have the bonding capacity and I thought that was an interesting comment and we're beginning to see more and more of this and I think in large part, as they maximize their capacity, they do have a limit and we do see a ceiling in terms of just how much work can they reasonably take on. Some of them expressed an interest that it was just too far away and were not able to really devote the resources to it. And then the last bullet that we have here is the project was larger than they expected and once they reviewed the plans, they withdrew and they just said, it's just too much. So those seem to be the more popular responses and answers that we received as far as why we did not see the participation that we would like to have seen. Board Members, any questions about enterprise and some of the things that we're seeing from this effort is we try to understand the construction market and inflation and how economy, and how the economy is impacting all this?
I think it's just a testimony to the fact that workforce and workforce training, we have to step up and be more aggressive and progressive.
Board Members, the last one to report on as well is the work that we have happening up at Jefferson State. This is the Bethune-Duramas and the Georgia Layton Building Project. Just a quick overview here, when we take a look at the initial results, President Brown and his team up there and as we work on this project, we had two different dates where we just got zero participation and this is a project that was estimated at about $3 million. So we broke this down and went at this a little differently the third time and as we went out there, we were able to break down on the civil package and get two competitive bids there. We awarded the one that you see highlighted at 905, 900,000. When we take a look at the building envelope, we still were struggling in this area. We got one proposal, so we then went back out and we were able to exercise our right to engage and request informal bids and so we did that. We did the same thing under landscaping. The results came back under the building envelope where the proposal there was close to 3 million. We found a local contractor that did come back in with the numbers that you see there, which was about half of the cost of what we received on that single and solo bid. It goes back to the concern that when Title 39 works best, it's when we can get multiple contractors looking at this. Two is not the best, but certainly we looked at this proposal and felt confident that we could stick and go forward with this. Landscaping, as of up till yesterday, we had only gotten one bid back and that again was from CW Woods. We did receive a late response after four or five weeks of requesting another landscape proposal, but it was about another $100,000 higher than what we see here in this number. So overall, that is a report of those two projects, but it does highlight the demand for contractors and workforces Chancellor Baker made mention in terms of, we just don't have enough of these trades to keep up with the overwhelming demand of construction and so forth that is available across the state. Board Members, that is my report. Any questions?
Mark, you have a question?
Yes, sir.
In fact, you just mentioned that contractors are hard to, contractors are hard to attract, but those contingency numbers on bids are just always, that's just a large number. I know it's a percentage. Do we know, are we identifying the contractors who always dip into that contingency amount versus the ones who do not?
In the contingency amount, are you referring, can you clarify that just for me for just a second?
Well, go back to any of the bids.
Yes.
What is it, 10% contingency amount?
On those bid packages.
That's a lot of, that's a big pot of money.
It is.
We just need to make sure we're watching that money and not letting contractors use that every time.
That's a good comment. Let me speak to that. When we give the estimates that we've prepared and you see those preliminary to go into bid, we always typically are defaulting to that 10% because we expect even with our efforts that we've got a good estimate, but that 10% is sort of that buffer that we are relying on to bridge if the numbers exceed the budget of construction. And one of these projects, for example, if you go back to the enterprise number, we'll send this out to you. We took that 10% after we got the complete, you know, collection of all the bid responses and the lows. That bid now is set at about 30 million. We took that contingency and I believe we dropped it down to about 2.5%. And then on the contingency piece, we have really taken a hard stand on this. The office here that we have, the facilities division, any type of contingency, any type of an allowance, those have to have prior approval either of a regional facility director or a project director or from me. And so we are really shutting down and closing off those contingencies. We're going through a bit of an education process with design teams because historically they've looked at that contingency or the allowance as that opportunity to use it and spend it and we're saying, no. We're saying, these are the documents and to the very best effort of the design team, they've put that out there and this is what you should expect. And so we scrub and we literally question every request and RFI and get into it and say, tell us what's going on. We're even breaking it down to understanding every request, is it a hidden condition? Is it an error and an omission on the part of the design team or is this a request that has been forthcoming at the college or at the specific campus location? So I think, Mr. Mitchell, I think that we are really beginning to address that because it has been a concern. I hope that answers the question. Okay. Thank you, Board Members.
Wait, wait, don't, don't leave. In the budget that just passed the legislature, there's an appropriation in the supplemental budget for money to go to prison education.
Yes.
And that language specifically says until this board has acted, none of that money is spent. Mark has been, I've, I've been meeting with the commissioner. Mark has actually begun the process of looking at plans before we will even bring to this body a request to utilize that money by sending it forward to correction. We have to be assured that there is a plan that is satisfactory in place. The reason I bring that up, because some folks want to act a lot faster than we can make that happen and it's only been within the week that you've had access to. And look, I've been meeting, I've met with the commissioner three times now, I believe, and we're working together to make sure that we are in compliance with the appropriation bill. We're not going to rush things just to accommodate someone. So do you have any comments you want to make on that or just, I just wanted the board to understand because I know people have been talking about it.
Yeah, Director Hammond and I and his team, we had a very good meeting yesterday out at the Elmore Site. That is a very ambitious project. Quite frankly, they're building a city and so there are a lot of costs that are involved, but we really have a good beginning after this meeting of understanding where that allocation and appropriation from the legislature that they gave us of a
And that language specifically says, until this board has acted, none of that money is spent. Mark has been, I've been meeting with the commissioner. Mark has actually begun the process of looking at plans before we will even bring to this body a request to utilize that money by sending it forward to correction. We have to be assured that there is a plan that is satisfactory in place. The reason I bring that up, because some folks want to act a lot faster than we can make that happen. And it's only been within the week that you've had access to. And look, I've been meeting, I've met with the commissioner three times now, I believe. And we're working together to make sure that we are in compliance with the appropriation bill. We're not going to rush things just to accommodate someone. So do you have any comments you want to make on that? Or just, I just wanted the board to understand because I know people have been talking about it.
Director Hammond and I and his team, we had a very good meeting yesterday out at the Elmore site. That is a very ambitious project. Quite frankly, they're building a city. And so there are a lot of costs that are involved. But we really have a good beginning after this meeting of understanding where that allocation and appropriation from the legislature that they gave us of $100 million or so, how that's going to go towards prison education. So we can anticipate at this point that half of that will go to Elmore. And we'll go to the other site south, in the southern part of the state. I think it's Escambia County is where they're slated to go. But at this point, we'll be preparing him. At some point, we will bring back in the next few months to the Facility Committee and to this work session and understanding of what is happening with prison education in these two centers. I think Dr. Funner Burke has got a great start in terms of what's happening out there. But it's now our opportunity, to the very point that Chancellor Baker made, to understand exactly how does that work?
Additional to that, there's also an appropriation in the budget for funds to be utilized in developing infrastructure at the Brookley Development for the Mobile Airport. In addition to that, we are in the process of developing a new hangar, basically, in classrooms for our programs as well. Just as a matter of information, I get a rush call within three days. They want me to transfer money. That's not the game we play. I've made it clear, and the mayor is totally supportive. We're going to know that that fund is going for the purpose of infrastructure development, not some other item. Because we need that in order for us to be able to develop the programs that we need developed at that location. So I just, in case you get questions, I just want to make sure you understand. We are supportive of what's going on, and we're working within the confines of rules and regulations. And we're going to live by that. But this board will approve both of those before they go forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next item will be presented by Dr. Tracy Carter for the Closen State.
Good morning. I'm here today to present some information for our request for an additional instructional site. And this will be for our standalone practical nursing program that we have developed with a partnership with Baptist Health. The facility is here in Montgomery. It is entitled the Baptist Health Resource Center located at 2001 East South Boulevard. And the facility, this site will be used for two main purposes, which will be to conduct the theory or didactic portions for the nursing program and also to house the faculty offices for the program. There are two classrooms located in this facility that we will use. One of the classrooms has the ability to seat 30 students. And there's a larger classroom that is also called auditorium that can seat between 145 and 150 students. So, and both of these classrooms have the audio and visual capabilities that are needed for instruction. The proposed new instructional site is being provided free of charge to Trenum State. And instruction is proposed to begin in spring of 2024 semester. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carter.
The final item on the work session agenda is Calhoun Community College's request that the Board of Trustees authorize the college to establish rental fees for newly constructed dorms in Decatur, Alabama, which will go into effect, if approved, in the spring semester of 2024. The college is currently constructing a new 68-bed dormitory facility in downtown Decatur in a joint venture with Athens State University. The dorm is intended to provide housing for both the college, colleges' students and Athens State students, including those who are attending the Alabama Center for Arts in the city of Decatur. The proposed fees are for a studio, $2,500 per semester, fall, spring, and $1,700 for the summer. For a one-bedroom dorm room, $2,800 for both the fall and spring, and $1,900 for the summer. And for a two-bedroom dorm, $2,500 for both the fall and spring, and $1,700 for the summer. The college estimates that the dorm rental fees will bring in $450,000 in annual revenue, which will be split 50/50 with Athens State. Athens State and the college will also split 50/50 the expenses of the dorm as well. Does anyone have any questions relating to this item?
That was, as David mentioned, our final item on the work session agenda. If there are no more items or discussion, this meeting is adjourned.